Start. Look at that. Um.
Sharon turned into a flower.
Yeah, the other, the other icon was so ugly that I just pulled the first, first photo that came up and that happened to be it.
And a slice of fruit. Maybe an orange. Okay. Um. We'll have our call to order now. It's supposed to our disorders. Everyone's here or who's gonna be here. Uh, we all, did we all look at the minute and do we approve of the June minute?
Dana, I did not get them.
Oh. I don't know what's going on.
There was a second email that you sent that I did get it. I was just looking for the.
From Dana?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I just cut and paste what I had.
I did not get those and I did not get an agenda for tonight either.
Yeah, I think I almost forgot. Mid, agenda and minutes are like, it's kind of. If we can remember, it's pretty much the same agenda as always, except for.
Okay.
Three Park Street. Um. So I guess we can add that to our heap of. Minutes to check later.
Yeah.
Uh, do we have participation from the public? I don't think so.
I don't see anybody else on, from the public.
Um. Oh, is Diane here? Well, I guess. Or Suzie. Yes, those two is coming back tonight. Well, this is a special meeting. In lieu of a real meeting, so. Uh, I guess we won't. Have Suzie or Diane tonight. Um.
I do see some other people I don't know, so.
Yeah, that's probably from, um, them, our other project here for Three Park Street. Uh, David, are you ready to report on buildings, et cetera?
Sure.
Great.
Um. Been pretty busy just doing kind of maintenance stuff. The, um, the Barn in the Jail project is moving along. If you've been over there, the Hillside Trail is really nice. The handrails and stuff are backordered, so, uh, and they have a couple more sidewalks to finish, so. Hopefully that's gonna happen soon. Um, I had to, I just wrote a letter today to extend our license. Flood management license with the DEP for that project for another year. Just have time to finish it because that expires at the beginning of next year. We did wood repair and painting touch up on the fitch as well as the wellhouse. And the fence immediately adjacent to the townhouse, working on bids to get the townhouse painted because it's terrible. From the pointing and hopefully we've got that worked out to at least get the lower part done. The tower is another big. Uh, thing. Everybody always estimates work upon the steepness is a whole lot of money, but I think it's really just mainly painting and a couple pieces of. Um. At the museum, the kitchen is just about to go in. It's gonna go in sometime this month. We just finalized. Last a couple of things, but I think all the cabinets and appliances and everything, the contractors were, he's received them all. Uh, we just re-roofed the gazebo out back. Um, uh, it was in pretty bad shape and, uh. Hopefully it will get painted the next week or two. The historical side is having a cons, little concert back there for people to come and listen to live music. Uh, I think it's August 26th. Also did work on the gardener's cottage fixing some wood rock. Fixing, kind of reinforcing the existing wooden stair rail and we've ordered a metal stair, stair rail, uh, to replace that. Take a while to get. Um, and I've been having fun. All the interpretive signs that we put in, one of the things I didn't know when we bought them was that you have to clean them and you have to seal the edges with Thompson's Wood Seal. Once a year, so something else to do. So I'm going around doing all that. I have like nine more slides to do. One's at Matthews Park in Pine Island, the others are done. I did turn over the maintenance, uh, on all the buildings at Matthews Park, the mansion, gate lodge, carriage house, two facilities management last week, so I'm pretty happy about that. And, uh, just waiting to hear back from the state. I did a draft RFP. To do the national register update for the Lockwood Matthews Mansion so that we can add the other buildings to the register so that they're eligible for grants. Soon as they approve the RFP, we'll go out to bid for that and that's a fully funded, um, update by the state by the 15,000. And that's pretty much it.
Great. Can you send me the phone numbers for the guys for facilities management in case I need them at some point?
Sure.
And are they a separate, they, are they subcontracted from the city or are they part of the city or?
Yeah, the guy that heads it, Neil Rendy, actually it's outsourced. He's the head guy. He's the guy you contact. He works for garden services and they're really good.
Yeah.
There's never been any problems. I'll take, I'll, I'll text you his.
Great. Um. I don't think, have anything new for cemetery? Do you?
No, I'm trying to get, uh, I'm trying to get, uh, Parks and Rec to mow Kellogg Commศ寺 cemetery like once a year. I wanna get in there and spray the cleaner on the tombstones, but the, the weeds and stuff are too high. We're about ticks, so.
And then financial would be. I said we could ask, we could get Suzanne back for that, right? Uh, do you have a financial report for us?
I'm spending all the money as fast as I can.
Okay, good. Pretty well gets their hands on it. Yeah, there was a nice tour of the, uh. Matthews Park the other day. Every square inch, pretty much. Of the building that is. Um. Any old business? I guess not. Uh, so next up is new business and proposal for apartments at Three Park Street. And. I know we have Liz Succi, et cetera, to talk about that.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the Historical Commission. My name is Liz Succi. I'm a partner at the law firm of Corvett, Torrance, San Diego, Tennessee. Uh, 1055 Washington Boulevard in Stanford and I represent property owner of BPC. Capital Management and the principal of that partners, that entity is Brad Craighead and he is present tonight as well. The proposal that is before you relates to two structures that are proposed to be constructed to the rear of the existing 1830s, uh, Stiles Curtis House at Three Park Street. And the proposal is to maintain that, that house and do whatever we need to do in addition to bring it to its former grandeur and it's really a wonderful Italianate design. And a reminiscent of the structures that used to be on Park Street around the green. Uh, on the, the line tonight as well as Todd Bryant, who is our historical architectural historian, we are required to engage Todd. To evaluate not only the structure and its architectural history, details and, um, style, but also to provide information on the, the originator of the building, Mr. Stiles Curtis. What he was all about, what he was to the city of Norwalk. And then also on the line is Frank Dierno and he is the project architect for the two new structures to be proposed to the rear of the existing house. If all approvals are granted, we will, we will eventually have a total of 10 dwelling units across the three buildings. The existing Stiles Curtis House would remain office on the first floor with two residential units on the second floor. And there would be revised plantings and, um, on the site and, uh, some other site improvements such as drainage and the like. But at this point, I'd like to have Mr. Bryant explain to you what he has uncovered, what he has discovered. But before he does that, I just wanted to add that the application, the applications pending before the zoning commission include special permit. And in the East Avenue Village District, special permits. Available to property owners of historic structures and they are available to encourage, um, those structures to be maintained. And to allow property owners with historic structures on them, some relief from the regulations in terms of density, coverage and things of that nature. We've also suggested a text amendment application which would reduce the minimum lot size for properties in the East Avenue Village District to avail themselves. Of those types of flexibilities into the regulations for properties with historic structures. And lastly, there is a coastal area management application pending since the property is within the far reaches of the coastal area management boundary. With that background, uh, if I could turn it over to Todd, uh, you can answer any questions you have. He has a brief presentation. And then I'd like Mr. Dierno to explain to you the design concept behind the two new structures. Todd?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, this is, this is a really good, this is a great house. Uh, it was a lot of fun to research it. And, uh, and first of all, it is within the Norwalk Green Village District. Which was written, the nomination was written in 1987. Uh, the period of significance is 1760 to 1930. And, uh, the nomination states that the Norwalk Green Historic District is a significant collection of well-preserved 19th and early 20th century residential. And institutional architecture, which reflects the development of the city between 1760 and 1930. And I think all of us will agree with that. All, we all know the green and it, it, you know, that, that is a very good description of it. I'm, uh, I'm kind of, you know, using my own notes to crib here, my, my document that I submitted to you, to you. Um, and, uh, the nomination also states that this, that it specifically mentions the Stiles Curtis House. And it says it's the most detailed example of the Italianate style on green and it praises it with stuff by saying, without question, the styles. The Stiles Curtis House is one of the best preserved notable houses in the district and I think we'd all agree with that as well. Now, it's a great example of the Italianate style and, uh, the original house on the site was built in 1830. Uh, which was more than likely in the Greek revival style and there is a Greek revival metal piece in the house that would back that up. And then in, uh, some say, you know, the, the. The plaque on the building says that the, uh, the, the Italianate addition was built in 1870. That would have been a little bit late. But on the other hand, you know, these, these styles and dates were written long after the actual buildings were built, so. People did whatever they liked. So 1870 is quite possible. It has several of the, of the defining characteristics of the style. It has a, a nearly flat roof with a cupola. It, the roof is, it got overhanging. Eve supported by brackets and it's most, it's most wonderful feature in my opinion is that, that flared entrance stair that's flared just. Railway, stairway. Uh, I'll get there yet. The, the flared railing on the, uh, entrance stairs. Now Stiles Curtis is an interesting guy himself. The 1850 census listed, lists him as a tin man. No, I don't think he, I don't think it was the Danny DeVito tin man. I don't think he was selling aluminum siding, but who knows what that meant at the time. And his, he has, the value of his real estate was $10,000, which is about $370,000 in 2022. And he was living there, uh, at Three Park Street in 1850 with, uh. His second wife, Jane, two daughters, three sons and an unnamed, an unnamed Irish man servant and Elizabeth Hanford. So it was a crowded house. But as we go further on, later on, he becomes, uh, he's, he's identified as a merchant in the, uh. Later on. And then, uh, in 1870, the 10 years in eight, between 1860 and 1870. Were exceptionally good for, in the 1850 census, he, uh, sorry, I gotta go back here. 1850 census, his real estate was worth $25,000, which is about $870,000 today. And, uh, $10,000, uh, three, I wish about two, $348,000 today for personal wealth. But between 1860 and 1870, he suddenly is listed as a manufacturer. His real estate is up to $629,000. His, his personal estate is down. Uh, or, and his personal estate, rather, is far, far from down. It's up to $240,500 in 1870. That is the equivalent of 5,000,000. $308,000 in 2022. So this guy did very well in those, uh, 10 years between 1860 and 1870. He, it, it's the Norwalk City Directory in 1871, lists him as the president of the Union Manufacturing Company, uh, in New Britain. And they were, uh, a metal fabricating company. Uh, that was just, uh, uh, apparently an extremely successful bu, uh, business. How come, how a guy from Norwalk came to own a big factory in, in New Britain? I don't know. But he certainly did. So he was probably one of the wealthiest people in Norwalk at the time. So he, uh. Let me just find this.
And everybody knows we're not talking about the house behind Todd, right?
Pardon me?
We're not talking about the house behind you and the.
No.
Your.
Now, this is the one that had, I just, I didn't have time to change the slides.
Right.
That's, uh, that is, uh.
Oh, crap.
I'm just looking for, but he was also, he, he, uh, he was, uh, the founder of, uh, two of Norwalk's first banks. He was, uh, on the, originally a commissioner of the first taxing district, which was, uh, not called that then. At the time, it was, it was, uh, the old city of Norwalk. Uh, he, uh, became eventually the chairman of the first taxing district. I know somebody else who held that position. Uh, and he, he did very well. He was an extremely successful guy and the monument that he left for us is this wonderful house. Now, moving forward about, uh, what's proposed is, uh, is. They're proposing to, uh. Rehabilitate the exterior of the house. Nothing changes in the exterior. It's accepted that it's better. The painting, it's, it's, it'll be painted. Any repairs that need to be made will be made. Uh, I'm gonna leave this to, to, to Frank and Brad to elaborate on that. And the buildings behind, the design of the buildings behind will, they are not gonna be Italianate and this very much follows the, uh. Secretary of the Interior standards for rehabilitation, even though they are not required to do that and they are not receiving tax credits. But what that, what one of those standards requires is that any new construction, you know, that kind of a project. Be, uh, inspired by, but not identical to the historic house. So these buildings in the back will be in the Second Empire style with, uh, mansard roofs. Which, uh, were popular right after the Civil War and you can see that at, uh. 93 East Avenue does, that, that, uh, that, that mansard roof was probably added. Uh, you can see it at, uh, uh, Three East Wall Street. Uh, that was, it was a very popular, uh. Style at the time, but it, and it followed the Italianate style. So you have something that is in a, in, in, you know, in. The same kind of era. It's, it's in the same era and it's a style that would have been familiar to, uh. Actually, if Stiles put that house, the, put the addition on in 1870, he didn't die until 1881. That style would have been familiar to him. So it's not a, uh, it's not really a, uh. An intrusion on the district at all. And beyond that, uh, it's, it's not the only building on the green that looks historic. That, uh, was, was, uh, built at a later time. And my examples of that. If I can find them. Are, uh. The, the house next door, Two Park Street. The Samuel Weed House was actually built in 1917 despite what it looks like. And he built that to harmonize with the Belden Bissel House next door. Uh, that was, it, that itself evolved from 1780 to 1860. The 1850 Congregational Church on the, on the, on the north side of Three Park Street burned in 1924. And the, uh, and it was replaced by the, by the current building, a colonial revival building. In, uh, 1930. Or not 1930, I'll get, sorry, my notes are confused here. Uh, and. And the 18th century and even St. Paul's on the green was built in 1930. As a replacement for the wooden church that was built to replace it, uh, that was burned and trined raid in 1779. So there, the, there is a precedent for this kind of, uh, uh, construction on the green. And I think it's being done very sensitively and I think it fits into the historic district.
Thanks. Is that it? That Todd?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry. Yes. That's all I have to say. And I'll wake up now. Come on.
Alright, thank you, Todd.
If anyone has any other questions of me or Mr. Bryant, we're happy to answer them. But if not, I'd like to have, um, Mr. Dierno explain to you the idea for the, the two structures, the architectural style and contextual elements. And certainly if you have any questions for Mr. Craighead, you can certainly ask them, uh, at any time. Yes?
Unmute. David.
I just have a question. Um, Todd, was any, uh, is any historic paint analysis been done on that, that building?
And any historic, I'm sorry?
Paint analysis?
No, no, it's, it's covered in siding at the current, at the moment. And, uh, I, I don't know, no painting, no paint analysis was done on it.
I'm just concerned about that because some of the projects I see, particularly the one across the street from the townhouse, I mean. You know, beige and light blue trim and white, I mean, it's, the, those aren't. Any realm of possibility of, of correct appropriate colors for that house and then people are putting in black window frames where there were never black window frames. You know, inspired by HTV and the farmhouse look. Um, I'm concerned about. You know, having black window frames and inappropriate colors on that beautiful house, uh, in the restoration of the side.
My understanding, nothing, nothing like that has been done on this house. It was done on Three Park Street and, uh. There was some arm wrestling and I lost.
My concern is what's gonna happen to this house.
Not Three Park Street, Three, uh, yeah, no, it's gonna be fine. It's not gonna, there's gonna be nothing done to the house that would be out of character.
Right, there, there are no, there are no proposed changes to the existing dwelling other than to, I think we're, we're gonna be trying to remove some of the siding, but. No changes to windows or doors or colorations. And we also have to undergo village district design review through the zoning commission's process, which is underway right now.
Okay.
David, I can, I can answer that.
Thank you.
It's, uh, can you hear me? Okay, it's Brad, Craighead, the owner. Um, can you hear me? Yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, yeah, hi, I just thought I'd just step in here on the paint color and so forth. And my, my intent is to change nothing. In terms of the way that the building looks, not only the facade, but any part of the building from Park Street and from across the street on the green. White is the simple answer. Um, that's the consistent color of all the other buildings in the neighborhood. I too was not pleased to see. That the former funeral home across the street, I think it's at 75 or 79 East Avenue, was paid like, painted like, like green. And I had a discussion with Mike Rin a couple of years ago, like, how did you let him paint that light green? If I had my druthers, everything in the home would be white and then it would maintain that sort of Norman Rockwellian look. That's my goal. Um, so I think, just while I'm on the phone here, I would just say that I, I did buy the building from Dr. Heliotis, Dr. Arthur Heliotis. And he contacted me because he felt that if anyone was gonna do the right thing, that that would be me, that I would respect. The way that the building looks, but also its heritage and that is, that is absolutely my intent. I own the building next door, which is Two Park Street and I've done four other properties in the neighborhood. Uh, Eight Lewis Street, which was a farmhouse, which is at the end of, um. The first congregational church, I think was, I think I did that in 2016 or 17. Um, that was built in 1860. The, the facade of that building didn't change at all. Uh, Two Park Street, we didn't change that at all right next door. If anything, what we will do is we will, we will. Endeavor to, at least in terms of the additions in the back, which Frank Dierno can go into, he's the architect in the project. If anything, we will do everything we can to incorporate not only architecturally, but also landscaping. This building with the, with the properties to the left. Two Park Street and the first congregational to the, uh, church to the right. And just to mention a couple of other properties that I've done in the neighborhood across the green, 85 and 87 East Avenue. 85 East Avenue is a Victorian, I think from 1888. Uh, 87 East Avenue is a 1906 copy of a Virginia plantation house. We did a small addition on the back, um, and then 96 East Avenue, which I worked with Todd. And some others on in terms of bringing that back to its former glory, which is a Greek, uh, a Greek revival. So I have a little bit of experience working with Todd and, and others on a range of different styles of architecture around the green and I can assure you that I'm gonna do everything I. I can to, uh, to maintain the look, um, that you're, you're familiar with right now. So, thank you. Oh, uh, one other thing I would just, I didn't hear Todd use the term adaptive reuse. Um, I'm not sure if there was a reason behind that, but as you well know. These properties are extremely expensive to renovate, reconstruct, preserve, however you want to, whatever terminology you want to use. And, um. You know, there's, if anything, I'm trying to set the standard for how others will hopefully, um, purchase and renovate, reconstruct or preserve other properties. Not only around the grid, but in other parts of Norwalk. Um, so I've got a vested interest in, I'm a landlord, so when we convert these apartments to. Uh, these buildings to apartments, I rent them out, so we're in it for the long run and if anything, we err towards. Spending too much money on higher quality materials, the idea being that lower maintenance cost and longer, um. You know, they're just, they're just, they'll just age better. So, thank you for, uh, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Yeah, it is, it, it, adaptive, sorry, but adaptive reuse would be an appropriate term, but, uh, or rehabilitation, either one.
At this point, may we turn the, uh, the podium of the mic over to Mr. Dierno and he can explain to you the concept that he derived from his discussions with Mr. Craighead. Frank?
Good evening, everyone. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
I don't know if you've had a chance to see any of the drawings that we submitted. Because, no. Alright.
I did, but it was a long time ago, so if you could try refresh us with. Some.
So the intent of this project is, I have a lot of sensitivity to buildings that I appreciate over the years and these historical buildings. Are near and dear to what I've studied. Throughout my work and just through my education. Lot of respect for the past architecture and the scale and massing. So the approach here is. Very responsive to the sensitivity of keeping what's there, keeping that front facade. Um, the approach through the, the property as you're walking towards the west to, um, where the, the courtyard is. There, the appendages between the buildings. So the massing of this project is actually. Separate buildings, so it pays homage to the Curtis Stiles house. It, it doesn't, um, do anything but give it space and proportion is important in this project. So that is really the approach. We've had. Two unique buildings that are touching each other only by walkways and porches. Only by walkways and porches. So you'll see on the front facade of the building to the left. Next to Two Park Street, that's one building. And then the building proposed to the rear, that's the second building, and they're attached through. Common deck and a walkthrough. So when you're coming from the rear parking lot and you're approaching this open walkthrough. It separates the buildings, and as you walk into the garden area. Facing Park Street, you actually see, you will see the monument that is the Norwalk Green. So again, it's referring to what is important about this Norwalk Green area and. It it gives a good background to this beautiful house that's on the property. And Todd did point out about the mansard roof design. And so we went ahead and proportioned this roof for the two structures that are being added to the property. Kept the same lines and the double hung window design. And you'll see on the north green east elevation facing the Norwalk Green that. We've brought this porch around from the front of the Curtis Stiles House. All the way across the front of the building. And there's the east elevation facing the green. So we've kept that proportion and the lines of the. The original house. And we brought that porch around to the front and added that scale, which I think is very appropriate to. Keep that intent and. Architectural sensitivity to what's there. And that's facing from Two Park Street, facing the building. Again, you'll see the Curtis Stiles House. In every elevation other than coming from the parking lot. But you're seeing how the buildings are attached, but not one massive structure. The scale is very important to the to Brad and to everyone a part of this project. We spent a lot of time with proportions and the detailing of these new buildings. The siding will be clapboard, painted white most likely, or close to that color. And the roof shingles will be a dark roof, similar to what is original on that Curtis Stiles House. The details of the fascia boards and the columns will appropriate scale. We will not have the scrolling details to the original house. But that is just in respect to what was the original historical house. So we're not trying to copy it, we're trying to get those proportions and. Disciplined enough to respect what was there.
Can you remind me again the size of this lot?
The lot is just over twenty thousand square feet, it's twenty thousand three hundred seventy three square feet.
The only thing I would add is, in the first slide, the sort of. Bird's eye view is, we we made a very conscious effort to really decentralize the building. For the buildings, which we're calling one a carriage house and the other a stables. The original idea was to. Try and come up with something, and to be fair, that looks like it's always been there. And it's certainly far more expensive to build, or I guess in one, in this case, preserve. And then add two more structures than it is just to add one. We've got multiple foundations here, multiple roof lines, multiple. Structures, but the idea is to create space between all of the different buildings. So that you're never really driving in or around the property. And looking at a wall of windows or a wall of doors or a wall of. You know, sort of unattractive, cheap, I put it that way, but the way that a lot of developments are done. And I think the best, the best way to get a sense of the kind of quality that we. Will stand behind is to look at the other structures that we've done at the other buildings in the neighborhood, in particular ninety six East Avenue, where we did something similar. Which has this conservatory, or we also call it a sanctuary, between building A and building B. So that you can see through from one side to the other, and as Frank said. You know, distribute the massing in a way that makes it. More pleasing to the eye and consistent in terms of scale with the with the other structures around it in the neighborhood. And also, in this particular case, because of the location, we have the Norwalk Green, why would you not want to drive in? And look through at a central courtyard, or when you come around the back of the building. And and by the way, the structure is set as far back and as far away from the street as we possibly could. So that first elevation, it's kind of hard to appreciate. Just how far back it is from the from the sidewalk, but it's as far back.
What is the setback from the house, the original house and the proposed addition additional buildings from the road?
Frank, you probably know that.
So the proposed additions are. Well within the forty foot setback of the building of the property from the from the road, the front yard setback, the original structure is. It reads thirteen and a half feet from the front yard to the porch. That's the original Curtis house, Stiles Curtis house. The the building is about nineteen feet, the porch is about thirteen feet, so it's a six foot porch. What we're proposing is about fifty five feet from the property line in the front.
And are the trees that are going in front, are they going to be screening the the new additions? Are they going to grow tall or is and not the?
These are original, these are, these are original trees.
Yeah, there's, there's been a big discussion on the trees. In fact, the three trees that are in the snow shelf. Were. That was the first thing that that people had asked about, and they're technically not on our property, they're city property, but. The sidewalk there had buckled significantly and they unfortunately had to cut out. The asphalt that was there and et cetera, et cetera. Bottom line is, we'll be sort of redirecting. The sidewalk through an easement with the city and then putting in a new. Sidewalk, which my understanding is it's not only is it five inches of concrete, but it's also four inches of sort of underbed, and that's what really threatens the root system of these trees. So the goal is to is to keep those because that provides the screening. That people want. There's also a very large holly tree there that's closer probably to Two Park Street. That's going to stay. The idea once again is, considering your question, is to provide screenings, you're not walking by and looking in people's windows. And then there's also another, I I believe it's a holly tree, I'm not sure exactly, but it's right next to. Free Park Street on the other side, that's going to stay there as well. So everything that you see there, that's of any significance. It's, the intent is to have it. And then we'll probably replace it with some smaller plantings, otherwise it will just be simply too dark in the building. A question that somebody else had asked. On the zoning, maybe it was Michelle or Brian Baker, was about the about the screening between Three Park Street and the building behind, which is owned by. John Lesko, which is a funeral home. And he doesn't want a fence there, actually, what he wants is trees, and so we've agreed to put in trees. And, you know, it provides more of a natural setting between the properties as opposed to a six or eight foot fence. So, you know, we're trying to use materials that are consistent with the period and use. You know, natural forms of screening rather than than, you know, white and black, you know, picket fences and so forth, which is just not. Really what I think was consistent with the neighborhood's character.
I think the entire goal of Mr. Craighead and and Mr. Dierno is to create additional living space apartments. That is contextually appropriate and doesn't compete with the grandeur of the Stiles Curtis House. Yet has some very interesting features that on some other projects that you've seen. Don't exist here but don't exist elsewhere, such as that interior courtyard, that as Brad mentioned, has a view, and as Frank mentioned, a direct view. Into the courtyard and into the back of the property, and then from the back of the property out and across East Avenue to the green, that's. That has taken some time and some creativity, rather than just creating a. A building that just would block that and and look somewhat out of place, yet achieve perhaps. A greater number of units or a greater return for Mr. Craighead. There's far more attention paid to the aesthetics of the additions. As they relate to the existing house and and those trees in the front, and and Mr. Craighead would certainly like to have those trees that exist in the city right of way. Be maintained as they're old and beautiful and historic and and have a certain character brought to his property.
Could you re-explain this area between the two buildings? Because I think you you started to, but then when I saw the visual, I didn't quite understand the two floors of that, like. Part that you look through from the between the buildings. Like, what's on the second floor of that?
Oh, it's actually a community deck on the second floor. On the rear parking lot. You're, it's an open walkthrough, you're walking through this area facing the green, main lot. And you look up, there's a second floor community deck for the tenants to use. We're trying to co-mingle this building with people that are there that have a place to go. That's not just in their apartment, and I think that's part of bringing some of the residents back to the green. Is having somewhere else to go than other than just closing their door. And we're creating this, similar to other project, projects that we're doing is. Besides the green space, there's courtyards, there's terraces, there's porches. It's somewhere that. Any tenant can go and spend time. And then walk to the green if they want to. I think this is an inviting idea of having these walkthroughs. And places that they can meander and. Open up their doors.
And are there breezeways connecting all the buildings? I'm calling them breezeways for.
Yes, there are.
Okay. That to the Stiles Curtis as well, right?
People, people want outdoor space, so rather than having these sort of rinky dink little balconies everywhere, right? If we can have shared space, as Frank said, in a couple of, I mean, whether people use it or or not is something else. We're not, we certainly wouldn't let people have a grill out there, right? The idea is just to have a place to pull a chair outside, because I think. You know, with COVID, people have put a value in outdoor space. It, you know, it's it's another dimension and. That's absolutely so. And so our business is Norwalk Green Living, which is. Obviously, the neighborhood, the fact that we don't tear down the buildings. And the fact, the fact that we really try and incorporate landscaping and outdoor space into our finished product. I think that's something that makes the, you know, the the buildings pretty appealing. And unusual, I'm surprised more people don't do it.
I see Todd change his background now.
I was ashamed anyway.
I didn't want to shame you, but.
I just take that knife right out.
Oh, I can see, is that the Tybek Temple back there? No, can't be.
Way back there.
One, just to reiterate, are there ten dwellings total and with an addition of eight dwellings? Or what is the total number, I guess, in the new apartments?
Excuse me, ten total dwellings across the three structures, two, two in the Stiles Curtis House, and the remaining eight would be. Split between the new. Sure, and first floor of the Stiles Curtis would be office space, as it is today.
Yep. And are these one bedroom, two bedroom studio? What what's the configuration?
They are both one bedroom and two bedroom, ranging in size from about six fifty, nine seventy five for the two bedroom, for the one bedroom. And then about eleven hundred square feet there about for the two bedroom.
Can I just see the visual again about the. The schematic, usually when we do this, when we did it in person, we could keep looking at it.
I can bring it up, what specifically, the elevations or the site plan?
From the, from the road first.
It's the elevations.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's facing, standing from the Norwalk Green, looking at this building.
Okay, well, it looks kind of crowded, but you're seeing behind it, there's, it's longer than the original house. You see a little bit on both sides.
If you go, if you go down the page. And you'll see right there. Nothing is surrounding the Stiles Curtis House on three sides. This building is still alone. Any addition is behind this original building. So you can see the setback from the Park Street. We kept the bay window on the Stiles Curtis House intact. We, it was very important to keep this building. Free from any new structures.
Did the aerial view, Frank?
Site plan?
Yeah, the site plan. I think that's the easiest one to really get the scale right.
Yeah, it's SP one, Michelle.
And just a quick comment, those those elevations, those architectural elevations. Are totally, they're everybody, that that's the way they're always done, but they're actually pretty unrealistic in terms of where the way that you would experience.
I understand.
Yeah, and you you saw that with the sightlines in the in the the one that was just up there.
Should be SP one.
Were we doing the plan view too?
Yeah, it's a site plan. Not the survey.
They're broken up into different decks, and I'm not sure, there's one deck with just the. Pulling them off the cities.
It was the first, the first slide that you showed before, we're.
Oh, the 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 engineered site plan?
Yeah, the first one.
Okay.
I could, I could pull this up.
That's just the title bar.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
It's not as easy.
It won't work.
Oh, so it's gonna look like Michelle?
I thought you you did have one that was, that showed where everything was on the property.
It's in the ether, it's coming.
I can share this one.
That's it.
Oh, yeah, that one's, yeah.
That's it.
I just saw the architectural.
That thing's a gallery in the back, a drainage gallery, you understand that, right?
Rectangle there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an engineering drawing. And you can see what I was describing in the west elevation, looking at the side of the Curtis. Stiles Curtis House, as you'll see the bay window. These buildings are really just touching each other. And there's a walkthrough between the rear building and the Stiles Curtis House. Which it's covered, these are all covered walkways. We call them porches, and the Stiles Curtis House has a rock around porch. So the idea is keeping that idea. And scale where people are able to walk around these buildings. It's sort of a small village in the rear.
Does everybody that lives there has like a, has like a porch or that they that's near them that they could go to?
They all have access to all these porches, yes. And that was intentional.
Not, I don't think every apartment has its own dedicated space though. Not, I don't think every apartment has its own dedicated space though, right? There's a bunch of shared areas.
The entry points are through the open walk-through on both, on both ends of these buildings. You're, you're not coming off the parking lot without having to walk through. In either case. So again, the intention is to get people to move through these buildings on the outside, not just the inside. So it's not an apartment building. These are houses. We're trying to create houses that people live.
Um, the, the original siding on this, on the, the original house is vinyl siding now? Is that what you said? Is that going to all be matching like clapboard?
Yes, the intent is to, to uncover that vinyl. It's aluminum siding. So it's aluminum siding we want to take down and we're going to find some beautiful clappards there, I'm sure.
And so whatever you find, the rest is going to be similar to that?
I think if you, most cases, if you go, if you drive by right across the Norwalk Inn. The siding that's on that building. Which is, it's that Hardy board, Frank. What is it called?
Hardy plank.
Hardy plank.
Yeah, it's a synthetic product, but. It um, it looks and it's heavy, but it, and it never needs to be repainted. And it, I think it's made, it's almost like concrete. It's like masonry.
It is. It's cement, it's known as a cementious product, so it is.
Right, so that would, that would replace, that's, that's the basic product for the exterior of the Stiles Curtis house and probably for the rest of the building. It's clapboard for all intents and purposes.
Yes.
Does anyone have any other questions of Mr. Craighead, Mr. Dierno, Mr. Brian or myself?
Do you have recreation area? But what's in, in front of that? Isn't that all grass there too and the, along the front? Isn't that all grass?
Yes.
Yes, um, we're, we're showing the recreation area that is a requirement behind the setback, so. We can't include what's in front of the setback at forty feet, but that is all grass area, yes.
Okay. Well, anything else, ladies and gentlemen?
Yeah, I, I have a question that's, that's not related to this, but just because the name came up. Somebody mentioned Dr. Arthur Heliotis.
Yes.
Uh, what context was that?
He, he sold us, sold me the building.
Oh, okay. All right, thanks. It's just, um, he and I grew up a block apart in Stanford.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so the last I saw of him was our graduation in nineteen sixty-eight.
He's at one oh eight East Avenue. He owns that building too, which is a Victorian structure right across from uh, the Norwalk Inn.
Thanks.
This is an investment property that he bought back in nineteen ninety-two, I think.
It's good to be a doctor.
No, he took care of it. He took really, really beautiful care of it.
Everyone else satisfied with what we've seen so far and?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, everyone, thank you for your time tonight. Thank you Chairman Laird for scheduling special meeting. We're very appreciative of that. And if you have any other questions, you'd certainly share them through staff, but if not. Uh, whatever your process is to send to the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, your outcome of tonight's discussion. We'd be appreciative so we can move forward with the planning and zoning review and, and hearings uh, in September. So thank you again for your time and your willingness to schedule this meeting on short notice.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice night.
Yep, you too.
Thanks, folks.
Yep.
Thank you.
They're still there. Where's Frank? Frank's still there, I guess. Yeah, I was curious about the original color. I don't think it would have been white, right, David? Would have been some other color?
Well, yeah, so the, the idea of white painted everything around. Town grants in New England was sort of a nineteen ten, nineteen twenties construct. You know, like you go to Darien and everything's painted white. None of those buildings were white uh, in the eighteen hundreds. Really when they were built, especially the Victorian church. So I mean, you know, it's paint colors is one of those hot button things. I'm okay with white, you know, I'm just, I'm not okay with beige. You know, modern colors. I mean, white is like, okay, well, you're not going to make it worse. You know, and I, I agree with Brad that the sage green on the down, downer few home is unfortunate along with. A lot of everything they did on that building. So, but, but we don't have a strict thing on painting analysis such to push the issue on uh.
Right.
The building across from uh, Mill Hill and it's just disappointing. I mean, you know, at the end of the day, paint colors can be changed. You know, it's just, why do we have to live with it? And, and I'm fine with white. But I just didn't want to get into it.
Yeah.
Really, other than just point it out, make sure that they weren't going to do anything crazy. You know, I, I really, I'm not crazy about the black window frames that they put in to those two buildings. Um, because that's, that's like the farmhouse style that's from watching too much HGTV. It's not about paying attention to what was on the original James River House that was modeled, because it wasn't black window frame. And, and neither one was the other one. But you know, we just don't have the rules and, and control that we need to have.
Right.
You know, my only other opinion, I mean, I know some of you are, are not happy about density and things like that. I do think we need density in, in particularly in the town centers. And this project to me is doing exactly what we wanted that this zoning change to do. Is to um, provide an economic incentive to preserve the buildings in the front. Because otherwise we'd be, we'd be talking, we'd be fighting demolition, demolitions like ninety East Avenue. And this at least, you know, gives them the carrot. And then, you know, once it's done, they always have to maintain it. I mean, that's, that's part of the, the rig. So I think it's accomplishing what the, the um, the zoning change that, that, that we. Put together uh, was intended to do. And I think it's a, you know, it's a decent looking project.
What, what aspect of this um, project is um, is what they are taking advantage of? That's more than what they would if they weren't doing historic preservation?
They, we're allowing them, they're allowed to build more units in the back.
More units.
Yeah, I mean, that's what they're getting at. They're getting.
So normally they would only have how many on this kind of a lot?
I, I don't know. It would be specific to whatever lots. I think they would be more incentivized to, uh, it would be harder to do, but they would be more incentivized to bulldoze it. And build a horrible building like the Park Plaza, that brown brick. Or, you know, the horrible building, contemporary building on the other side.
Which one's worse? I don't know. Um, did we ever, did we ever talk about the text of venom? Are we doing that case by case or that's not even really our Bailey way, so to speak?
What do you, what do you?
What?
The, there was a text we were talking about. I know we talked about with the stuff on Black Hill about. Reducing the lot size for allowing um. Stuff to build. The problem with the lower part across from Benjamin Franklin, we. Were allowing them to build more on again, a smaller lot was something we were, the text amendment was going to be made. I don't know if we ever. Had any part of that. I can't recall. And she brought it up.
That was done, neither of those projects, even though they were approved, neither of those projects have gone forward. I mean, I walk by it every day. And, and they haven't done any of those improvements, even though they.
Right. So are we ready to vote on? Our opinion on this project, yea or nay?
I'm ready.
Okay, uh, those in favor, raise your hand.
Assuming Eric made that motion.
Yes.
We need a second.
Okay, so.
We need a second.
Uh, Lisa, make a second.
I second that motion.
Okay, so um. So that is four in favor, which is. Our, yeah, my brain stopped working. Um. And I guess that's it for now and I know. And there's no month, there should not be another meeting in. August, whatever month this is. Yeah, we usually don't have. Right? Um, okay, so now I'll need a. My brain really is dead. What's that called?
Motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Senior moment.
Eric.
Not that I don't love you guys.
Oh, these.
Yeah, where's my hand?
Oh, look, a third. Okay, so, motion to adjourn has, we're. Adjourn then.
All right.
Okay.
Night, everybody.
Night, night. Thank you all.